Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the one o'clock Prescott City Council Study Session. For the record, today is July 8th, 2025. It's 1:00 p.m. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
We have two items on our study session agenda today. Item A is a presentation and discussion regarding a request for naming of the Watson Lake Park Horseshoe Courts.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff does not have a formal presentation for this item. All of the materials were included in the agenda packet for today. But in accordance with the city's facility naming policy, which was adopted via Resolution 2022-1819 in May of 2022, individuals may submit an application to the city clerk's office to request that a city-owned facility or property be named. The city clerk's office did receive such a request from Kelly Cordis requesting that the Watson Lake Park Horseshoe Courts be renamed the Cal Cordis Horseshoe Courts in honor of Mr. Cordis, who in 2007 approached Mayor Rowley Simmons regarding installing the courts at the park. And that eventually came to fruition. As part of the facility naming policy, this study session establishes an opportunity for the council to discuss the application, receive any public comment, and hear from the applicant. And then my office will open up a 30-day public comment period to receive any further comments from the public on the facility naming. And this item will come back before all of you at the Tuesday, August 26th, meeting for formal action.
Very good. Do we have the applicant present? Come on up, Kelly.
My dad is smiling from on high.
Please speak into the microphone. There's thousands of people online listening.
Oh, good. Yeah, my dad would be smiling from on high right now. He spent a lot of time putting those courts together along with Mayor Simmons and Joe Baines. Joe Baines wasn't yet Parks and Recreation Director yet, but was a mainstay at TNT Construction. And between the three of them, they got those horseshoe courts done. It probably would be safe to say, I know I might be a little biased when I say this, but without Cal Cordis, I don't think those horseshoe courts would be there. Because it was his idea, and he spent a lot of time along with the help of a number of people putting those. They're nice courts, got lights and everything. So, and they're still holding horseshoe tournaments out there to this day. So, that's, and any consideration, I would greatly appreciate the council considering the matter. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly. Do you ever toss a horseshoe now and then?
Every now and then. I'm not as good as my dad was. But, yeah, there was just a horseshoe tournament out there a couple of weeks ago. So, and there's some more later in the summer planned.
Yeah, Rod and I were fellow Rotarians for quite a number of years, too.
My oldest cousin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of Cortises around, huh?
Just a few.
That's why you have your own junction.
What's that?
That's why you have your own junction.
You can blame that on my great-granddad.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not bear, but I see Councilman Moore's name up on the request to speak.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that for those of you who haven't been in the Prescott area for a long time, Kelly's dad, Cal, was a fixture in Prescott, particularly in the sports scene, and contributed for decades to youth and sports and supported particularly Prescott High School sports, the baseball. And up until about a year ago, he was still coming to the basketball games. And was he 97 when he passed away?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. So, Cal was a real fixture in Prescott, and he contributed a lot to our community.
I think I remember years ago, we talked about renaming the Centennial Center. And some people didn't like the idea of naming it after Prescotttonians. But I think it's a great idea because there's history here. And the people that were part of that history should be recognized.
Councilwoman Freworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't here and didn't go to Prescott High School, but when your dad passed, I read everything that the public wrote about him in multiple articles. And when I was looking at the criterias, the pre-work, and it said should have accomplished something that was significant and extraordinary beyond getting the horseshoe courts built. What he did for the youth in the community and that the people still talk about is pretty extraordinary. So I do think, just for purposes of our record later on, if we could include that information out of the Daily Courier, I think that would suffice to supplement this with the criteria, and I look forward to the vote.
Well, I think we will, we're all in agreement that we'll move this along in the naming process. So we'll bring it back on August 26th.
Correct.
And we'll make a final decision at that time. But I'm sure it'll be a positive one, Kelly. All right, then we'll move on to Item B, Presentation and Discussion Regarding Your 15% Alternative Design Concept Plans for Effluent and Wastewater Pipeline and SR-89 Improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. We're going to let Andrew bring the PowerPoint up here. But we're here today to kick off the public comment period. In February of 2024, council passed Resolution 2024-1876, which requires that the city council hold a public comment period of no more than 60 days. So we'll begin that today. It will end on September the 9th, I believe, upon completion of the 15% alternative design concept plans, which include a traffic report. And those documents were created by Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Andrew Baird is here today to give you a presentation. In addition to today's study session, there are two study sessions required and two public hearings. So today is the first of two study sessions. And the design concept report must include at least one alternative to a five-lane road, which Andrew will go over here in just a couple of minutes. Just to recap, we started this process in June of 2023, so we're two years into the process. In February of last year, we adopted the resolution for the public comment period. And in November of 2024, we entered into contract with Kim Lee Horn to begin the development of the design concept report as well as a traffic study. If you recall, in April earlier this year, we came before council and presented to you the top three ranked alternatives, which includes one non-five-lane road alternative. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Andrew Baird and let him do the presentation, and then I'll come back at the end and answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Gwen. First and foremost, Andrew Baird, civil engineer, worked out of the Prescott office for Kim Lee Horn. Secondly, I'm a Prescott High School graduate, class of 2000. I played basketball in front of Mr. Cordis. And I recall after basketball games, he would always tell me I need to work on my rebounding and my free throw shooting. That's probably why we didn't win state. But back to the matter at hand, I fully support the naming of the horseshoe pits after Mr. Cordis as well, for what it's worth. So today, I'll be going over, I'm just going to recap the April study session. There was a lot of information presented that day. So recap some of the traffic analysis and geotechnical reporting that we had completed. I will be giving updates. As Gwen stated, we finished the traffic impact analysis. We have completed the geotechnical studies. They're submitted in draft form for review right now. And we have 15% concept plots that have been completed for all three of the alternatives that have moved forward for further consideration. I will be going over the recommended alternative at the end of the presentation, and then Gwen will be coming back to, again, discuss next steps. As always, as with the last one, please ask questions as I go through. So feel free to interrupt, interject as much as you need as we go through, especially even if it's a recap of information. It's a lot easier to do that than to wait till the end because it's a lot that we're going to go through today. So just to recap the goals and objectives of the project, as everybody knows, the, it's, the number one goal is to complete the key section of the centralization to the airport water reclamation facility. That is the replacing the effluent main as well as replacing and upsizing the gravity wastewater main. We are also evaluating and minimizing rock removal based on the alternatives, and I'll be discussing that further along in the presentation. And a lot of this, as everyone knows, is the roadway evaluation. So what are the appropriate roadway improvements to complement the needed effluent and wastewater construction? Goal is to try and do this all with one project, but we want to make sure that all of the elements recommended are appropriate for this corridor. And again, that map that's there is the limits. Limits are from the Willow Lake Roundabout up to the existing Fippen Trail Roundabout, a little over two miles along SR-89. So we completed the data collection phase, the modeling and analysis, and the alternative development evaluation. If those that recall, we actually evaluated 20 alternatives. We had two different groups that aided in that selection. We had the Design Review Advisory Group, who ultimately selected the weighted criteria for us to evaluate the alternatives. And then we had a technical committee made up of five technical professionals who helped with our scoring. And that ultimately, as those recall, led to our three recommended alternatives. And now the phase that's highlighted, we are at the design concept report phase. We have completed an initial design concept report, and this is the start of the 60-day public comment period as part of the overall process. And so then the alternative evaluation recap, again, we had five members on that committee. We met.
Councilman Gambogi had a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, quick question. When you say 15% concept plans, what do you mean by 15%?
So we had originally a set of plots that were just aerial view, that were just plan view only. So we took the three alternatives and expanded upon that by adding a profile, adding earthwork numbers, and submitting that as, it's still in a role plot form, but the design has evolved to a more detailed analysis so that we can accurately put cost estimates together and start to analyze the corridor, not only from a horizontal perspective, but vertical as well.
But what does a 15% stand for?
That's the, that's the level of design that we are currently at right now, so very early in the stage. So with, with concept planning, the furthest you really get in a concept report phase is 30%. 15% is pretty typical. And then that allows us to complete the report, the plans, the estimating, the analysis, and then ultimately make a decision on the final alternative that then moves into final design. And then the final design iterations are 30, 60, 90, and 100%. And a lot of those are as the design progresses, you send that to different agencies for review, City of Prescott ADQ, and then you make updates as it, as it moves along. So we are still very early in terms of the design phase, but not early in terms of the completion of the concept reporting.
Thank you.
So from our meetings in early to mid-March with the technical committee, where they ultimately scored the 20 alternatives, and then we weighed those against the weighted averages of the 10 criteria and determined a top three. Ultimately, we ended up with a top four because as, as the resolution stated, we needed to bring one alternative that did not include any widening. So what's noted there is the first two in bold were the five-lane widening all the way through the corridor. That's two lanes in each direction and a median. That could either be a two-way left turn lane, a median for acceleration lanes, or a raised median through certain sections, but it's still a divided roadway by 12 feet, as it's proposed, all the way through the project limits. The five-lane widening on alternative 5B is five lanes at the north and south ends of the project. And then through the narrow section, we narrowed it down to four lanes and separated it by a barrier. That really narrowed it by about eight feet because the width of the barrier at the bottom is approximately three feet. And so those two alternatives scored the highest at the 7.437 and then 7.317. Number three was alternative 3A, which was so similar to 3B, and also that we had to carry forward a no widening option, that that one was left off. And then we brought in alternative 2B, which is no additional lanes, two roundabouts, write-outs where possible, and again, maintaining the current roadway width. With safety improvements that are required, we had, every alternative included safety alternatives. That was site visibility, removing rock necessary for site visibility lines, certain realignments of roadways, the extension of the acceleration lane south of Fippen. So all of those improvements included the safety considerations. And so those are the three alternatives that carried forward, 3B, 5B, and 2B ultimately. Any questions on those? So recap of the traffic study. The graphic on the left, if you recall, that was Willow Creek Road during the closure of 89 to repair the broken effluent line. So that was in mid-December. And what is shown on the graphic is in horizontal around the five-minute mark is a typical weekday. We gathered counts right after that detour. So it hovers just around five minutes on Willow Creek Road in the southbound direction from Pioneer Parkway to Willow Lake Road. The additional information where it shows travel times all the way up to 25 minutes was, again, during that detour and that full closure of 89. So as, as we talked about, Willow Creek Road experienced extreme congestion, which we measured in terms of travel times through that specific segment of roadway. We saw an AM peak from around 7:30, 8:30 that you would expect for commuters. But then we saw from noon all the way about to 6:00 p.m., an extended PM peak. And as we noted in the April meeting, that is a result of, we still have commuters in the afternoon that are leaving work, but as this is a retirement community, and we have a significant number of folks that are not working, they're out actually traveling in the afternoon hours, and that is causing additional congestion on our major roadways. As you recall, again, this was essentially what was modeled as 2050 traffic on Willow Creek Road and, and the extreme congestion that, that we had stated you could expect if there was no widening ultimately on 89. This would ultimately be the traffic that Willow Creek Road would experience based on these findings from, from the detour condition. So a blessing and a curse that the effluent line keeps breaking, but we can gather traffic data and start to explore where traffic is ultimately rerouting when we have to close one of the major roadways that runs north-south through town. And then we collected data actually for SR-89. And so what is shown on the slide there, the graphic to the right, is not travel times, but vehicles. So similarly, if you have more vehicles along a roadway, you're going to see extended travel times because of congestion. And we're seeing those same peaks along 89. So we still have an AM peak for commuters. But then starting around noon, we see continued peaks all the way down until about 6:00 p.m. So we did, obviously, the traffic that was rerouted from 89 during the closure that was using Willow Creek Road, that same traffic is kind of following that similar pattern of an AM rush hour and then really kind of an entire afternoon into the evening peak traffic throughout the day. And again, that started to inform some of our recommendations in terms of what's the validity of a flex lane if you don't really have a discernible AM/PM commuter peak, when you have to make adjustments for those that are, they're traveling in different directions throughout the day because they're not restricted by, by work hours that, that some are. So again, data from the detour and then additional data that was collected specific to the, to the 89 project.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, could we back up just a second and talk about the, you talked about having a technical committee, but you also had an advisory group. Who served on the advisory group, and how were they selected?
So the advisory group was made up of community members. So we had representatives from the school district. We had representatives, a representative from Save the Dells. We had a representative from, several from the city. So it was really a cross-section of everybody that lives, works, and recreates here. It was 15 members, sorry, specifically. And they were brought on with, with one task, to go through the 10 criteria that we used for weighted averages and to ultimately weigh those averages so that we could use that to, to select the alternatives.
The reason I raise that question is I know that we just went through a general plan process where we chose community members to participate in a process that ultimately we didn't pass. But sometimes we're accused of like bowing to special interest groups or maybe not following the advice of people who serve on boards, committees, and commissions. And I'm wondering if there was unanimity with the advisory group? Like, did you come to a consensus with citizens serving on this advisory group where there was some consensus, like, yes, this five-lane or, or no additional lanes? Was there any consensus one way or another?
So their, their task was not necessarily to evaluate the alternatives. Their task was to weigh the, the selection criteria. So that would have been, that was view shed impacts, that was environmental impacts, that was safety, that was overall traffic capacity, all the way down to costs and constructibility. And so we used those three meetings with the advisory group to, the first meeting was to run through what that criteria meant. And we, we spent a good two hours talking through. You individually can decide what that criteria means to you as you start to prioritize those rankings. But we have a paragraph for each that we're going to explain what we mean by view shed impacts. That could be, obviously, of concern here is the rock removal from a view shed impact. But in some cases, some could look at it as a positive because it kind of opens up the corridor to expand views to outside of that corridor. And so we use that meeting to allow that committee or that advisory group to individually decide what their priorities were. And then the second meeting was to actually go through and weigh that criteria with what we had that pair wise, where you selected one against each other. And that was in real time in that meeting with those members. So necessarily consensus? No. But when you have 15, 15 members all scoring, you would see some people scored certain criteria higher than others, but ultimately, that's why it was weighted. So that's why one, 14% in terms of safety and traffic capacity, down to cost, which I believe was at about 4.2, which was brought up at the April meeting as terms of like a surprise that that was so low. But that was what ultimately those members decided. But everything was done individually, which was, I think, we purposely set that up so that, yes, as a group, we would discuss what each one of the criteria meant. And we had certain dialogue and discussion in terms of that. But you individually were not swayed by the other 14. You had the, the chance to go home and think about it. We, we handed the, the selection criteria to them to go home before they came back in three weeks, come back with more questions before they went through the exercise, which was done on their phones individually. And in real time, we saw those scores on the screen come up.
The only reason I raise that question, I think it's good for the public to know that there was an advisory group that participated in this process and that provided feedback to you, ultimately to the city, as far as how this process would go forward.
Yeah, and I believe there might be even some, several here that were part of the advisory group that would maybe speak to it. But yes, we, we set it up as the advisory group and the technical committee, two separate processes, and then ultimately pairing the two to, to come up with the scoring. Because one thing to note, in some cases, you're talking with technical committee members as we're talking about specific safety improvements and, and technical roadway elements that, that we wanted to have a geotechnical expert, a roadway expert, and certain people that have that technical know-how to score. But again, when you score it against the weighted criteria, that averages everything out to where you could start to see where certain improvements really just rose to the top.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You were on that slide a moment ago on the traffic study and data collection. One of the things where I've had some feedback is that, you know, the numbers are significant, but then X person, Y person takes a drive, as I did the other day, at 9:30 in the morning. And I made it between the Fippen and the Watson Lake Roundabout in about three minutes. Again, I know that's all anecdotal, but how do you respond to those concerns and questions that come up about, are we accurately measuring impacts through this statistical analysis when consumers perhaps don't have the same perspective? Understand the survey, for example, indicated that quite a few folks didn't think there was a problem. This is obviously before we embarked on this initiative. What's your, what's your take? What's your explanation?
So in the April session, we had not completed the, had the traffic impact analysis completely. And so the original analysis was really based on lane capacity. So your roadway So your roadway starts to fail when you start to have more than 1,000 vehicles per hour on one lane of roadway. And you can see the graphic on the right, we're experiencing that. That's one-way traffic that's noted there. And you can see we have 1,000, or sorry, 1,000 to 1,200 vehicles in the AM, and we're pushing over 1,200 in the PM. And so again, anecdotally, and from past studies, just from an overall lane capacity, when you're over 1,000, you're starting to reach that unstable flow, where, yes, it may feel like in a given time, you are driving, you're getting through there in three minutes, but if you add two cars from a side street and three more cars platooning, next thing you know, you're suddenly slowing down, and that can really vary throughout the day. So we are at a level of service E through the corridor based on that initial analysis, which is again more of a lane capacity. And I'll have a slide on here that talks through the other analysis, which is more based on vehicle density per lane. And that's where you start to look at how closely vehicles are following each other, and again, how close you're getting. So that old rule of thumb of you want to stay two seconds behind that car, that's how you start to measure vehicle density. And you start to see if we have 15 to 20 cars that are following each other in a line that are less than two seconds away, that is starting to exceed capacity because that's unsafe. And that's where we start to see the majority of the crashes through here are rear-end accidents or they're single-car accidents. And a lot of that's a result of having minimal shoulder, but also because cars are just following too closely to each other. And so, yes, we kind of looked at it in terms of two ways. When we were running through it with the advisory group and the technical committee, we didn't have the full analysis completed in terms, like I said, that vehicle density, but we had general rule of thumb capacities, lane capacities, that lent itself to that. But certainly, for every person that drives that and gets through in three minutes, you'll talk to someone who has waited, or they're trying to get their kids to school in the morning, they wait 20 minutes to make a turn. So that level of service for that car that's trying to get out is an F, whereas the person that's just driving through happens to make it through, they're operating more at like, you know, a D or an E. But overall, this corridor is at that level of service E, and we've found that in two different types of analyses.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, I'm sorry, I was having some technical difficulties a minute ago, but so if you answered this question, I apologize.
I have to go all the way back to the beginning?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
My name is Andrew Barrett.
Hi.
I'm Kinley Hor-
Appreciate, appreciate. The advisory committee, you talked about them scoring like those specific kind of metrics, like view shed and cost. What was the number one thing that they ranked? Like, what was the number one priority? Do you have that?
Yeah. I gotta go through the packet.
Or maybe the number, the top three, I think, would be interesting.
Safety was number one. I seem to pull from the last packet.
See, now I feel good that you didn't answer this question.
Yeah, vehicular safety was number one at 14.2%. Environmental quality of life was 12.8%. Effluent wastewater line, constructibility and maintenance was 12.8. Those were the top three. And then traffic flow and capacity was very close at a 12.2. So the scoring ranged from 14.2 down to 4.2.
What was the lowest?
Cost was the lowest at 14.5.
Cost, yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I remembered, which is interesting.
Yeah, and that one, you could, everything, no names were on the scoring, but you, in terms of what the group saw, but we could see as certain like advisory group member, number four, and you would see cost, that one was consistently low. There was a consensus that cost was not really a priority, whereas you would see some that would move like, vehicular safety was top three pretty much across the board, which makes sense. We want everyone to get through this corridor in a safe manner. But as you start to get to the middle, you saw some like environmental view shed was the top on a few reviewers, and then it varied throughout. But yeah, everything started off at a 10%, 10 times 10 different criteria, and then through that weighted scoring, everything started to kind of move around to ultimately-
That number two one, the environmental quality of life, can I ask you, that's kind of, I mean, it's a bit of a vague term in my mind. Like, how is that defined, I guess?
So that was quality of life in terms of your commute. So let's say, will this improve your commute time? Like, and that's one, it is a vague one. So one of them was commute time. One of them was, do you have the ability to get to and from to a park to recreate? We did keep that as kind of an overall, kind of a big topic, but then that was when we did spend a lot of time with the advisory group in terms of what that meant. But we did differentiate between environmental quality of life in terms of your quality of life as a commuter, as a citizen, as someone who lives in this community, and what this would mean to you versus specifically view shed impacts. We had two environmental, environmental quality of life and environmental view shed, which was specifically to the rock removal and the surrounding area.
Thank you, I appreciate all that detail.
Mayor Protam, Ken Tomy?
Thank you, Mayor. So Andrew, I couldn't see it on my package here, but if you're looking up there at that time, it was December 17th, 18th, and 19th. So is this whole study derived on a three-day? And what year was that? Can't see it in here.
No, the whole study is not based on a three-day. That three-day specifically was when the road, 89 was closed to start to repair the effluent line. So those times there was, we went and established that what is that is traction travel, is we can establish travel times through a specific corridor. So knowing that the road is going to be closed, it was going to be detoured to Willow Creek, we made sure to set up our traction to capture the time it took for cars to get through there, knowing we were going to be sending a significant amount of vehicles over there.
But we have historical data on that road that I'm sure has tracked much longer periods of time, don't we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we've based, like, for example, one of the questions was growth rate. How do we come up with traffic growth rate of 2.75? That's based on historical data. So that's historical traffic growth rate from ADOT counters, from Simpo studies, from traffic on Willow Creek. So, yeah, we use five and 10-year historical data, and then we've actually got counts specifically for the Gateway Park design. We counted 89 in 2023, and then we counted again in 2025. So we have counts we've done, we have historical data, and we use all that to determine growth rates, travel times. But that specifically was a place and time we wanted to make sure we're capturing. A major roadway is closed, let's see what happens on some of those streets based on travel time. So it was one data point that we could use.
Yeah, you know, I know later on in your presentation, I think you're going to cover the emergency, the theoretical evacuation of Prescott, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gambogi?
When my esteemed colleague, Councilman Moore, asked the question about opinions, it reminds me of a quote from Daniel Patrick Moynihan, who once said, "You're entitled to your own opinions, but you're not entitled to your own facts." And one of the biggest challenges we have as city council with residents is, and this is a good example, where we have, we need to deal with the facts, and they outweigh our own personal observations. So I've hired a lot of consultants in my life, and I think this analysis by this consultant is an excellent job and really points to the heart of the matter.
Thank you, Counselor. We're not done yet, so that remains to be seen, but I appreciate the sentiment on Slide 7 of 30.
I was kind of hoping we could wrap it up.
I mean, I could skip to the end, I really have buried the lead, that's for sure. All right, this is an update from what we talked about in April, is the safety improvements. And what we started to look at was what's called a crash modification factor. These are based on past studies of implemented projects that they went and looked at crash data before and after an implemented project, or what is called a countermeasure. So for example, would be write-outs are a crash modification of .55. What that means is for every crashes that were a result of, let's say, a left turn coming out of an intersection, or a sideswipe, or a head-on, you could expect that if 10 of those accidents or 10 of those crashes occurred, that would be reduced down to about five or six. So you take 10 times .55. Again, this is based on past projects where they said, "We're seeing significant accidents at intersection here is a countermeasure, let's implement it and go track the data." And so as we'd stated before, all three of the alternatives included certain safety elements. They all have roundabouts. Roundabouts, when compared to signalized intersections or four-way stop intersections, have a CMF of .56. So they reduce accidents, they reduce crashes by half. And that is well-known with as more communities start to implement roundabouts, it's not only that it reduces the number of collisions, but it reduces the severity of them. You're not going to see T-bones and head-ons because the way vehicles approach roundabouts, they slow down, they deflect. The only accidents you're really going to see there are single-car accidents because people don't know how to drive in a roundabout, or because somebody doesn't yield and they're hitting more at an angle, which is not near as severe. So you also, you see a reduction in crashes, but you also see a reduction in that severity. And that's through case studies that we can anticipate that we will see somewhere around this in terms of a CMF. And then, so where alternatives three and 3B and 5B really stood out is because we are converting a two-lane undivided roadway into a four-lane divided roadway, and that leads to a CMF of .251. So that is, for every 10 crashes post-implementation, you would expect to see two or three of those similar accident, or similar crashes. My traffic group told me I'm not allowed to use accidents anymore, so that's why I keep correcting myself, so it's supposed to be crashes. And so that's where 3B and 5B really stood out compared to 2B. And then 3B as itself, as noted earlier, is it's actually, is the separation of vehicles through the narrow section. So we actually have a separated median through there as opposed to a barrier, and that adds an additional CMF of .701. Understanding that as we look at the crash data through the corridor over the last four years, we're averaging around 27 or 28 crashes. The severity ranges from, I believe in 2022, we had some injuries and some severe accidents in the range of two to seven. Recently, they're not as severe, especially through the narrow section, their rear-end accidents, their single-car accidents. And we still have mitigation factors for that, shoulders, and also just overall just separation. But still, this is a preemptive improvement to safety. So part of it, not only in terms of lane capacity, but specifically 3B and 5B, is you start to add capacity of the roadway and you separate those travelers, you're going to improve safety through there, and that's evident in the crash modification factors. And that did weigh into the ultimate alternative that was recommended. Any questions on CMFs?
Councilman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. So-
Do you want me to go back?
If you look, as one option, part of this assessment was to look at the current roadway. No additional lanes, no additional roundabouts, just the two at Watson and Fippen? Or two more roundabouts?
No, alternative 2B did include two single-lane roundabouts.
Okay, so two single-lane roundabouts, and some improvements to write-outs?
Yes.
And that kind of thing? So what does your traffic study say about 2B modified then? What's your traffic study say about that?
I will show you in a slide that's coming up, but just to go back, one of the reasons for the roundabouts and all of the alternatives was when we started to look at lefts out of these intersections, and that is a dangerous move in terms of conflict with especially a congested corridor, we looked at write-outs, but if you provide just a write-out only from a driveway or a local roadway, you need to have the ability to turn around. So we started to set roundabouts at strategic locations. So not only are they used for traffic calming and for obviously improvements just in terms of vehicle safety, but they're a means for those write-outs to actually turn around. So as we went through the alternatives, if we wanted to seek write-outs at some of the intersections, we needed a means to turn them around. And so that's why roundabouts are in 2B as well.
And did you find then that there were safety improvements resulting from this particular alternative, too?
Yes, there are safety improvements, but I'll just cut to the chase. Alt 2B is so highly congested that you don't see those benefits as much because traffic starts to grow on that corridor and you're at gridlock in 12 years. And so you don't start to see the safety improvement because no one can really get in and out of those side streets because there's so much traffic. And I have a video that I was going to surprise share everybody, but now I'm going to have to tell everyone that it's coming up soon. Did you have any other questions on that, Counselor? Okay. So this goes back to Counselor Grady's early question just on just the level of service, and this was, again, based on just overall lane capacity. So as we get in between the D/ E range, you really only have 1,300 to 2,700 of vehicle capacity in two ways, on two-way traffic on a two-lane road. And so we compared, this goes back to Counselor Ken Tomy's question on counts. We had counts in 2023 and then counts in 2025. And this came from a question from the advisory group, as well as the technical committee and as well as members of the public, in terms of when we start to say level of service E, is this really just isolated to certain times of day? The answer is yes, all day. So it's, you can see, we get the AM peak like I described earlier, where it's a level of service E, a slight dissipation in 2023, and then we're at an E all the way through the 6:00 PM hour. And then as traffic grew along this corridor, 2025, we had a little more traffic on there. We started to see that level of service E in the 8:00 AM hour as well. So it's not just that we have extreme gridlock in some other communities where you have gridlock AMPM, which maybe would drive that corridor to say, well, I'm going to level of service F, but off-peak, I'm getting through there. This is pretty continual throughout the day until we get to 6:00 PM. And again, that's based on lane capacity at that 1,000-car-per-hour peak, which that's where you're starting to see those counts are showing that. And then again, as I spoke to that 2.75% regional growth rate, which was based on five and 10-year historical data as well as our counts, and just to clarify, that is not population growth rate, as this is a regional roadway, this is traffic growth. So this is cars on the road that if we're bringing people in from Chino Valley, Prescott Valley, all of Yavapie County, they're using this, as well as visitors during, as we saw like 4th of July weekend, we're seeing a regional growth rate of 2.75% specifically on this corridor. And that's from counts that we get from ADOT on 89 and then supplemented with other data that we have. And so using those existing volumes, where 2025 count was a little over 22,000, and using that 2.75% growth rate, the roadway is failing in 2034. So less than 10 years, it'll be a failure. And then I think as the mayor appreciated last meeting, I just have F all the way across the board on that right-hand column, just to really drive it home, so.
Andrew, that growth rate of 2.75, does that take into consideration Deepwell Ranch?
So, yes and no. So the 2.75 was based on, again, historical growth rates. We did quick math on Deepwell Ranch, and there, in the master plan, it has 10,000 homes. We just looked at homes, not any commercial or any hotel hospitality, just from the master plan, 10,000 homes. A single-family home generates seven trips a day on average, so 10,000 homes would be 70,000 vehicles a day. So let's not assume all of those vehicles are driving on 89, let's just only assume a third. So right there, we are at 23,000 cars from Deepwell Ranch that would likely be using 89 at some point during the day. And if you note, that's almost exactly what we have in 2025. So just from Deepwell Ranch, the volume could potentially double. And so that kind of, and that actually, again, adds up to, very similarly, a 2.75% growth rate just from Deepwell. So 2.75 could be a low growth rate. It's what we've seen, the five-year historical growth rate is 2.75, the 10-year is 3.6. We've seen some in other models that are four. We've really seen none that are below that. And so, yes, we checked Deepwell Ranch just as one community that would certainly lead to traffic on 89, but did not necessarily model that in terms of land use and master planning growth on the corridor. We didn't feel that necessary based on the data we're already presenting here in terms of vehicle level of service.
Councilman Montoya? Councilman Montoya?
Andrew, just to follow up on that, did you also take into account Arizona Eco Development as well, in that same vein?
Just, just Deepwell.
Just Deepwell.
And so this kind of gets to the earlier question from Councilman Grady on the two-B level of service in 2050. So this is our horizon year, 25 years, 25 years later, and it's, and it's tough to see, and it's even tough to see on my slide here, but red is a failing roadway. And what we've looked at here is we're actually looking at now segment level of service. So you can see each one of the segments between the intersections was actually modeled, and this went back to that, the density of the cars per one lane. And we're starting to get here for one lane in the 30, 40, 50s. So this is bumper-to-bumper traffic through here based on 2050 projections, leaving the roadway as is. You will see that some of the intersections specifically are level of service A, B, or C, and that is partially because we are implementing those ride outs. And so some of that traffic that would just be waiting forever to make a left turn does have a gap and can turn right specifically in the northern part of the corridor. But what ultimately happens here is you start to measure intersection level of service, you're looking at delays, but you're, it's almost again similar to a weighted average. So you're looking at delays per vehicle that enters the intersection. So if 90 cars enter the intersection that are throughput north-south, and one car is waiting for six minutes, that one car at six minutes is not going to weigh as much as those 90 cars that got through in 20 seconds. So a level of service is a little bit deceiving as you start to look at it from an intersection because we're seeing in some cases, there is no gap for any car to, to leave. And we're seeing in the, in the traffic report that some of those side streets are waiting for four, five, six, seven minutes. There's, there's no gaps to turn. And so ultimately, this roadway is, we already show it, it's failing by 2034, so it is certainly failing by 2050. And that was confirmed by that, by that segment level of service, which is again is looking at density of vehicles on the, on the roadway. Did that answer your question, Counselor? And then so level service for alternative three B, and this specifically, I'm only showing three B. Again, five B and three B are so similar, especially in terms of throughput level of service along the corridor. So in the PM hour, we're operating closer level of service C almost all through the corridor from the segments, and then the intersections are around As and Bs, As and Bs and Cs. In the AM in 2050, you can start to see that on the north end, so this is, north end, if we have commuters coming into town, coming in from, as we talked about in April, the origin destination data, that we have a lot of people coming from Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, those, those morning commuters. And what is starting to happen is at the Willow Lake Road Roundabout, those turning movements that are moving eastbound to northbound, there is a significant friction between those travelers to the south and those trying to make a movement and get on to, to 89 northbound. And so what you start to see is in the morning in 2050, that traffic starts to build from that pinch point at the roundabout almost halfway up the corridor. So some of the recommendations in the traffic report where there would need to be some modifications at that roundabout, because that is starting to become the, the pinch point, we're looking at proposing kind of mid-horizon year, 2034 to 2038, recommending that you look at some slip lanes. So a direct south-to-west connector onto, onto Willow Lake Road, and similarly an eastbound-to-southbound slip lane, so that you can move those cars that are not actually needing to enter the roundabout, to stay out of the roundabout and get on their way, so you start to clear some of that traffic out. Additionally, and this is, this kind of relates to public safety as well, and that potential fire station located on the southeast corner, we've recommended exploring signalizing, one, to make sure you can get fire engines out of that, of that station. But also, we've started exploring just in terms of other projects around the state is implementing traffic signals at roundabouts where certain legs are overtaxing, and you can start to use that to meter out traffic similar to that you do at a freeway during, during peak hour. And so that's a recommendation, not initially doing it now, but tracking this, knowing that what's ultimately going to be your conflict point is that roundabout, and there's going to need to be some improvements there. The other thing to consider, and it's on the horizon, we talked about in April, is the improvements that potentially at the Willow Creek and Willow Lake Road intersection. And so one thing here is we started to grow traffic on Willow Lake Road in the eastbound direction, similar to how we grew the corridor. But as you start to study this intersection more, those commuters may choose to use Watson or Willow Creek Road instead of going to 89. So it's just, in this situation, it's, it's just that, that intersection specifically needs to be monitored. And it's recommended in the TIA in terms of future projects and improvements of that Any questions on this one? I made the graphic so small that no one can ask questions. Some are starting to realize, as I can't see it here. Yeah, well, we also need to raise this up for future reference. So one other question that's come up is signal versus roundabout. And then they brought up in April was there, there's several reasons for recommending roundabouts through the corridor. It will slow traffic down. That's been one of the primary concerns from the public is, once we widen, how do we slow traffic down through here? Two more roundabouts through this corridor will slow traffic down, especially if we, we put the proper deflections and the reverse curves as you, as you enter those roundabouts. They're generally safer. I've talked about that multiple times. It's been studied, and it's safer than, than signalized intersections. I brought up just driver expectation, recognizing that the majority of us know how to go from a roundabout to a signal, but it's certainly better in a corridor to be experiencing the same type of, of intersection rather than going from a roundabout to two signals to a roundabout or vice versa. And then what we did actually do is just look at, let's just look at the Willow Creek Road, Willow Lake Road Roundabout and compare it to a signal. So just in 2025 and in 2050, based on those volume projections, how would this operate? And this is just intersection delay. So you can see it's essentially double. So pretty minor in 2025, minimal delays, you're at an A in both AM, PM at that intersection with a seven-second delay. It's double for a signal, but nothing that anyone would notice. But when you get to 2050, your signal is at a 78-second delay, and your roundabout, and your roundabout is at 46 seconds. And then similarly into the PM, 68 to 120. So in addition to just the, the reasons I stated before, operationally, a roundabout will function better than, than a signal.
Councilman Gambogi? Andrew, this has been a big wake-up call for me. I've been in roundabouts on the East Coast, all over Europe, all over Asia, and I've hated roundabouts. But former county supervisor Jack Smith mentioned what you said, which is intersections give you T-bone accidents, major accidents, and roundabouts give you fender benders. And that, there is another example where the facts outweigh my humble opinion.
All right, slide 13, and I'm still on Councilman Gambogi's good side. This is great.
I read 26.
Okay, let me skip ahead. And so this is the traffic model. I'm going to have a couple of videos that this one I did show in April. Oops, I don't know why that didn't play. So this one is just the existing condition. So I brought up before was that we calibrate the model based on travel times, based on volumes. And then in this case, we actually had a drone flight out there for a very similar time. So this is about seven, almost eight o'clock. And we're going to just run through the corridor. This is obviously the, the Pippin Roundabout. And you can see, it's not exact, because we certainly wouldn't set up our model to match one day in time of a drone flight. But it's very similar in terms of traffic. You can see the platooning through in the southbound direction. And to early, the earlier point, you see those vehicles, while they're moving, they're definitely getting close to that two-second range. And so you're starting to see what is again designated as, as following vehicles as we start to look at just, just overall, overall density in terms of that corridor. And then you can also kind of see as vehicles just start to enter the roundabout, that's where that additional friction enters, that truck that just entered slows the other car down while the other one just tries to weave right around it, which, that was a dangerous move. So I have to talk to our models about that. But this is again where we're proposing to extend that acceleration lane because we know that is, that's too short. And that's in all of the alternatives. So the Pippin, certainly if it goes to two lanes, that would just be extended all the way through, but no matter what, that, that lane needs to be extended. And then the, the model just kind of tracks through the corridor, and again, similar traffic. And, and the reason for this is because our, our modeling and projections is obviously only as good as our baseline condition. And I think we can start to see that even if that meets all the necessary calibration requirements for a model, you can see just in the imagery here that it is very similar to what is modeled. So we're confident in what we're projecting from growth rates and, and from future, future improvements that, that the model is, is accurate. This is again normally where I ask for music, because there's silence, because people actually kind of get bored of watching a move, a video in traffic. So then I'm going to skip to the next model, and this is a side-by-side. So the original was a side-by-side comparison of a drone video and 2025, the 2025 model. This is a side-by-side of comparing alt-two B and alt-three B. And we did it in 2038 for reasons, as I showed earlier graphically, if we showed 2050, all it's going to show in two B is a parking lot. So the good news is for the fireworks, you won't have issues with parking lots in Watson Lake because the whole roadway is going to be a parking lot anyway, so you can get much more people there. But 2038 is midway through our horizon year. It's when we started recommending some of those improvements at the southern roundabout. And you can start to discern the, the differences between the two scenarios from a, from a roadway capacity standpoint. Again, same number of cars. So the alternative two B and three B is the same number, a 2.75% growth rate for 13 years, and then we'll fly the corridor. This is in the PM, so you can start to expect that you're going to see a lot more northbound And as we start to run through about halfway through, past this first roundabout that's proposed near kind of the park entrance, I'll pause it here. So same number of vehicles traveling the northbound direction, but with the additional lane capacity, you don't see near the congestion. You can start to see they're really starting to stack in the northbound direction in 2038. And then through the second roundabout, which is proposed just north of Twisted Trail, in kind of an outcropping area where there's a little bit more space, as has been kind of shown on the alternative plots. This is where we start to see the real gridlock, and this is bumper-to-bumper coming out of the roundabout. And again, alt-three B, same number of cars, but they're actually able to get through the system quicker because of that additional lane capacity. And as we approach the roundabout, what you can see on the left is similar, similar between the left and right. And this is again where the roundabout itself starts to become the bottleneck. And that's evident in both scenarios, right? In the northbound direction, you're seeing similar backups in both scenarios. But the difference is, as I hit play, is on the outbound side, heading north, there's obviously relief to get through, whereas you exit the roundabout in alt-two B, and there's just nowhere to go. So they enter very similarly, but, but obviously they exit different. And you can, you can kind of pick some pilot cars as this, this yellow truck starts to approach and just now enters the roundabout from Willow Lake. It's stuck in the two-B scenario, and it is already exiting and heading north in the other scenario, whereas now it is stopped. And so that's again, this is where we show reds and yellows in level of service, but this is where our model starts to be able to, to capture what would be anticipated between those improvements. Again, that's based on two different scenarios of data, data analysis from just an overall lane capacity, and the more intense kind of looking at overall density and intersection level of services. Same traffic growth in each one, same number of cars getting through the corridor, but obviously severe congestion in alternative two B. And then again, you can imagine, this is where we said, you're not going to see any benefit in some of those ride outs because there's no gaps to actually even make a northbound movement coming from the east because of just what you can see this congestion.
Mayor Protam Cantel?
Thank you. Andrew, I noticed on this, when you, when you superimpose that roundabout that you see right there, but if you, you don't have to back it up, but the, the one that you showed initially was, appeared to be much bigger in diameter. Is there an engineering standard diameter?
Yes.
And is that based on the length of trucks trying to get through those? I mean, how do they determine? Because that one looks so much smaller than the other one. Is it just because it's a graphic?
It's, it's based on approach speed, and it's based on design vehicle, and there's different types. So you can go all the way from a 150-foot diameter roundabout, which is more of an urban-type roundabout, all the way up to 220. So you have about a 70-foot difference in terms of the overall diameter of the roundabouts. And so that's one thing, as the design progresses, is ensuring that those roundabouts are right size. So yes, this model is not accurate to what is actually kind of shown in the concept drawings. And in fact, the updated concept drawings, which are another iteration from the alternative plans that are shown, you will see the roundabouts have started to become right size in terms of, they're a little smaller, and there are some assumptions made in terms of truck movements through there. We still can get fire, no matter what, you can get fire trucks through there, you can get certain types of vehicles, but there's other considerations we've been talking about in terms of what a larger, say a WB65, which has the 50-foot trailers, do they really need to turn around just north of Twisted Trail? Or if they're really lost, would they turn around up at Pippin where you have a lot, larger inscribed diameter? You can start to make some of those accommodations because obviously lower the footprint of that roundabout, less impacts on right-of-way, the surrounding area, but you're still able to get the majority of your vehicles through.
So are you, are you saying that the larger diameter ones are engineered to handle more traffic than the smaller ones?
No, they're not engineered to handle more traffic. They're engineered to accommodate larger vehicles.
Okay.
Through specific.
The length.
Yes.
So and then earlier in our conversation, you mentioned something about when the alternative was, was a single-lane roundabout?
Yes.
Well, how can we even do that if we have an emergency? How would you, how would a fire truck get through a single lane?
That's a very good question.
Is it up over the eased curb? Because I noticed that they have an eased curb.
So all roundabouts have a truck apron, so you can utilize, but it's, it's a challenge because yes, and we're going to, we're going to, you can envision in alternative two B, where we're, we have traffic gridlocked in one single lane, how would you get emergency responders through there? So independent of traffic, a fire truck can still navigate a single-lane roundabout because of the geometry of it. We set those up based on specific auto turn programs to make sure they can navigate it. Larger trucks utilize the truck apron, so you add another 10-feet inside where it kind of looks like a sidewalk. That's meant for trucks to actually drive on to get the larger vehicles through.
That's exactly what I was wondering. I mean, when you're engineering them, you, you're expecting that a truck is going to go up over those eased curbs.
You designed mountable curb on the inside, and that's how they navigate them.
Thank you.
Councilman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, when, you've convinced me in the last minute of this video about how three B is better than two B when it comes to the south. But at the very beginning of the video, I started noticing that three B looked like a lot more jamming happening at the circle than two B, and I don't understand that.
Which?
If you take this all the way to the beginning of the video.
So starting at Pippin?
Yep, up at Pippin. Two B is flowing a lot better than three B, so I'm not understanding the model.
So there is always variations in the model. So we run this model 10 different times, and this is what's shown on the screen. So this could have very well captured a moment in time where it's congested just for that certain segment. If I ran this model out for an hour, we would see over time, you would see that two B would be more congested than, than three B. This is just a 30-second clip of three B. But yes, there are certain moments where the model is meant to simulate traffic, so it's not... So it's not, you can see peaks and valleys and platooning of vehicles that are going to congest even a widened roundabout in a certain instance. And then that traffic disperses and then you'll see continued free flow movement through there. So there would be certain instances where you would see that in a 30-second timeframe, it may look like 3B is better than 2B in a certain segment. But overall, over a timeframe of one hour in the PM, 3B will significantly operate better than 2B.
Councilwoman Moore.
I think.
Did not answer the question, I don't think, but.
I, I think part of the visual though, is the fact that there are two lanes that each are carrying traffic simultaneously. So it looks, there's a lot more cars going through 3B because there's two lanes going through 3B, whereas there's only one lane. So there's less cars going through at 2B at the same time.
Yep. And the other thing I'll actually.
So it's a visual thing. There's, you can handle twice as many cars in 3B than you can 1B because you have two lanes going through the roundabout instead of one lane. So I think that's the difference.
No, I answered it poorly. I'm going to try again, Councilwoman Ferworth. So the issue here is.
I'm spending $37 million. I want to make sure it looks really good.
So the answer is less cars are making it up in 2B because they're all congested down at the roundabout on the south. So what is happening is traffic is actually able to get through the corridor and you're seeing more congestion north of the Fippen roundabout because we're able to get traffic through that corridor. On the left in 2B, all those cars that have made it through in 3B, they're stuck back south, south of the project as we saw in that pilot car that couldn't get through. So what you're seeing is we have a higher volume of cars that have made it up to the north end of the project and they start to hit more congestion north of Fippen during a PM commute. Whereas 2B, they're all stuck south of the corridor coming out of the Willow Lake roundabout.
Yeah, Andrew, you get some gridlock up in the signal light changes underneath the underpass.
Yep.
Between 89A and Pioneer Parkway and then 89 going underneath it. So I've seen there's, that's a very awkward configuration there. And I think that's going to, as traffic builds over time, that's going to be a real bottleneck itself.
Yeah, I know ADOT is continuing to study that intersection as well through a separate
Councilwoman Ferworth.
One more question because I brought this up last time and bring it up again. Can we see the same thing with fire trucks regularly entering from potential stations? Can we see the modeling and how that affects the flow of traffic?
Yeah, we absolutely can add that.
Okay, I would love to do that before we end up taking a vote.
If the Public Works Director desires it or have.
Well, I'm asking for it. So I would like to see that before I take a vote. Thank you.
And that is a very good segue to emergency evacuation management, which I believe.
All right. Mayor, Councilor Holger, Fire Chief. As part of this presentation, we wanted to give you at least a cursory idea of what emergency evacuation would look like. Now, before I get into the next three slides, I want to put a really big preface out there. It is very difficult for us to predict what an emergency is going to do, where it's going to start and how it's going to behave. And I'll give you a personal example. Just before I came here to Prescott, we had the Marshall Fire in Boulder. And I can tell you that that fire impacted the communities of Lafayette and Louisville where nobody had expected it. Everybody thought it was going to be in the backdrop in the flatirons, come out of the hills and it started in the grasslands and burned across a six-lane highway and took out roughly 800 homes in the end of the day. So just keep that in mind as we go through these slides. So a couple of things. First of all, the sequencing, this is fairly basic, but I think it's important for us to review this. Of course, first, the emergency is discovered. If it's night, that's a bit more difficult than during the daytime, for instance. We would send emergency crews to assess the situation and begin to mitigate the emergency and make a decision fairly quickly whether to evacuate or shelter in place. A lot of times when we're talking about civil unrest or police situations, shelter in place is actually a better scenario, whereas for instance, in the case of wildfire, depending on where the wildfire is coming from and how fast it's moving, evacuation is probably the best option or a mix. We then basically concurrently go into emergency notifications through the Prescott Regional Communications Center as well as with our new software, Genesis. And then we work directly with our law enforcement partners to coordinate those evacuations as well as the traffic flow. Couple of scenarios to consider here. I already mentioned a few of the civil unrest ones and fire, but for instance, a hazardous material spill or a release is also a scenario that we should think about when we're talking about mass evacuation. I mentioned the timing of the event, when people are sleeping. As we saw in Texas, it is definitely more devastating than if people are awake and aware. Weather and location play a huge factor. We know that on dry windy days, fires are going to move faster than they are on other days. The notification and the lead time is significant. If we have a fire that starts in the Prescott National Forest, say five miles from town, that gives us some time to plan. That's a different situation than if we had a fire start from a structure fire, let's say up Copper Basin, that then extends into the wildland urban interface and starts a wildland fire. Lot less lead time and our firefighters are focused on that structure fire. So again, different scenarios. Communications are significantly important. We emphasize as much as we can for people to be signed up for emergency notification platform. So even right now, I'll put a plug into that. Go to the Yawapai County Office of Emergency Management and the Prescott Regional Communications Center to sign up for emergency notifications because that's how you're going to get that notification. Obviously also use our radio partners as well as social media, but very important that we understand that communications is critical, particularly early on in the incident. And want to emphasize something there once more. Because of social media, a lot of people will opine even in the early phases of an emergency. That does not help us at all. We're trying to put out a single unified message with very clear instructions. And when we start getting social media commenting, that really gets in the way of us trying to do our job. That is a known factor across the United States. You can't really completely get rid of that, but again, something I wanted to mention. And then citizen cooperation. When we have a situation like this, it's extremely important that citizens listen to those instructions and actually follow them in a calm, orderly fashion. So those are some factors we wanted to throw out there as we give you the following scenario. And what we're planning on here, and this is again, a very rough estimation of a wildfire that impacts Highway 69 as well as the downtown. And so we're looking at using State Route 89 as our evacuation corridor. A couple of things to consider here, we don't really know which way fire trucks are going to ingress as well as coordinate with the egress. And so when you see the traffic model, the inbound lanes are actually open and we'll talk about that a little bit later. And we're using Willow Creek Road routed toward Willow Lake Road northbound. Side streets are going to all flow onto 89. So we're trying to really figure out what this would look like in terms of volume during peak traffic hours. And what follows next.
Councilwoman Gambogia has a question.
I, I just wanted to mention to the public, there's an app you can put on your phone called Genesis and that'll give you the alerts.
Thank you.
And a couple of things just to add on to Fire Chief's notes. We, we pulled similar traffic volumes that we've discussed in the PM hour. So we already had that number. And then we pulled some of our origin destination numbers for just workers in downtown and those that live downtown and added that to the, to the number, to the volume. So it's, I don't have that number with me, but as the traffic modelers put that together, it is based on, on data. But again, just one scenario of many that, that we wanted to model this initially. And so as noted, we've closed the TI 8989A, so you'll see no southbound movement, but this is routing everybody onto northbound. You'll note this is Alt 3B, so this is two lanes of traffic in an evacuation scenario with 2025 volumes in the PM hour and then adding in again, the, the downtown workers as well as those that live down there to, to at least put a number to it. And one can just again visualize with a single lane of traffic, we would be moving at a snail's pace through here, just because you can see the cars still getting through the corridor. And then similarly, we still hit a bottleneck at the roundabout, but traffic does continue to move through, namely because we cut off that conflicting movement that is coming from Willow Lake and routing them up to Watson. So we just pulled all of that traffic out. It was tough to see in the model, but we did still add cars coming in from the neighborhoods and side streets. So we used the density there and just spread that out. But as we just come through, you would have maybe caught one car coming out. But everybody comes out of those neighborhoods routed northbound. So we keep southbound completely clear. And I didn't assign a level of service to this because frankly, we put this together pretty quickly with the data we had. But again, visually, we can see traffic does continue, continue to move. This is 2025 volumes, so we haven't even grown the corridor yet.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I know some people might think, well, why don't you just route?
Sorry, I misspoke, Counselor. This is 2038 volumes. Sorry, misspoke.
Some, some of the public might say, well, why don't you route the southbound lanes all northbound? But one of the things that the chief mentioned very briefly, and I want to touch on more, is we have a mutual aid agreement with other fire stations, just like when Prescott Valley had the Legato fire. Fire units from Prescott, from Sedona, from Flagstaff responded. They all pitched in and they all helped. If Prescott had a catastrophic fire, we would need a way to get fire engines into Prescott from Flagstaff, from Chino Valley, from Sedona, from CAFMA, from Prescott Valley. And if you have all the traffic going northbound on both, on both southbound, northbound lanes, you're not going to get your fire protection into town to help fight that fire.
Yeah. And the other thing to mention there, and it's a great point, that for instance, police, other public works entities, the Forest Service, there is more than just, you know, as fire folks that would have to ingress into that situation. That's a really good point. Yep. And I think that's the last slide on emergency evacuation.
That was it.
So.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Protam.
Do you have a model showing all the fire trucks racing into Prescott to save our homes? No? Can we make one? And put everybody else on there too. Forest Service, Public Works, whoever else needs to get in there. I think the people need to see that. I, I can loan you my video from California where the bulldozer is moving the cars out of the way. Would you like to show that? Thank you.
Going back to just access, we do run a program called Auto Turn to run fire trucks through the roundabouts and through different access points. So certainly as the fire stations start to take shape and, and the access starts to take shape with the two fire stations along this corridor, we'd be able to look at those turning movements, that accessibility and tie that certainly to what's shown here. This is again, is rudimentary model in just in terms of just getting traffic out northbound and closing certain lanes of travel. But that's a model that we're certainly capable of putting together. Any other questions on traffic as I move into geotechnical? Okay, this is a recap of just the borings specifically. So this is when we went out 10 physical borings throughout the corridor. And what was noted specifically through the narrow section, borings three through seven, is really no determinable AB layer. And a minimum we'd want through this corridor would be six inches of asphalt concrete on 10 inches of aggregate base. And right now, what we're seeing is somewhere along the lines of two and a half. Now I can't see anymore. Six inches of AC on really no, no AB layer. And the AC was just put in several years ago by the city. And so the issue we found through here is that this entire section of roadway needs to be removed and replaced no matter what. So whether you widen or not, the roadway section itself is not, does not meet standard for the volume of traffic that is through there. We need six inches on 10 inches of AB to sustain just 22,000 cars a day for a certain period. And we know it's going to grow and it's already, it's already failing. And so that was a, that was one that I, I brought up in, in April, a finding once, once that report came in. And it just, as I reiterated last time, you've got a roadway section that is not meeting capacity standpoints. It's not structurally stable to hold the volume of traffic. And obviously we have an affluent line that continues to, to fail and need to be repaired.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. You just said something that made me think. If it's not structurally stable to handle the volume of traffic, could that also be why it's not structurally stable to handle our affluent lines from breaking regularly?
The, the primary reason we're finding is the actual shading of the pipe itself and the angularity of the rock that has been backfilled and shaded on top of it. And then certainly, if you have a structural section that's not taking account the loading on it, you can transfer that load to the pipe with a jagged rock on top of it. But the primary reason is because it wasn't shaded and backfilled properly. Every time there's been basically a pipe that's been exposed after it's ruptured, you're starting to see the breaking from the outside and they're pulling out these large angular pieces of, of backfill. But yes, that certainly could be, they, they could be one in the same in terms of your, your roadway section is not able to handle that load.
So how would we have asked for it to be designed? Is it designed like we asked it to be designed initially? Or do we not even know the answer to that question? Because it happened so long ago.
Yeah, I think this one is the roadway happened so long ago, the city came in and did basically an overlay, but it was inherited, I believe, maybe Glenn, from ADOT. And so it was a, it's a substandard section right now. The other thing that could be considered is in some cases, as we saw with the break in December, that actually washed out and undermined some of the, the bedding and AB. So you couldn't really determine it. But most cases, we've heard every time they expose that line, they're not finding an aggregate base layer in there.
Yeah, the city inherited highway, well, I wouldn't say we inherited. We entered into a land swap with Yawapai County about 10 or 12 years ago. And it was at that time that we took over the long-term maintenance of Highway 89 from ADOT. So I do not know the last time that road was rebuilt, but we've owned it for about a decade, give or take. And when we dig it up, we need to put it back so that it's structurally sound. And that is included in the estimates that Kim Lee Horn has provided to us.
Yes. I was told to move it along. So Counselor Gambogia has skipped to slide 30 as requested an hour ago. All right. So this slide is the results of the geotechnical investigation, specifically the rock removal. This was the seismic analysis we did at the outcroppings. The, what we're denoting here is the, the shear zones that have been established through the investigation. You can see in the image on the left, just the pattern of those, those joint sets as they start to kind of run between Highway 89 and Twisted Trail. That's all those vertical lines you see, or the horizontal lines you see through there. So ultimately, what our geotechnical engineer mapped out was the cut slope along the major discontinuity, which is the joint sets and how that tied to the toe of slope we would need to widen to the five lanes. We took the five lane widening through here and lined that up with where that first set of joint sets fell. And as was indicated in April, we were fully anticipating the removal of that rock would match very similarly what was done in the past to ultimately build the highway and be very close to vertical and really match in terms of, of ultimately the, the, the shape and the slope of it. One thing that was, that has also been noted in the report is that there just needs to be some discussion on just, just blasting in general and the means in which this would be removed, is that you would actually bore holes down at the bottom and use low, low, low-strength explosives to actually hit those shear zones so that that material could essentially cleave off. This, again, I think the CNI spoke to this when they presented to council a while back. And this has been confirmed by much of our investigation. It's in the initial geotechnical report that was provided. And additionally, just in talking to several that are out here and have removed rock before, they have confirmed that this type of method for rock removal would effectively cleave off if done, done properly. And then the other thing to note specifically, is we know this is going to be a CM at risk project. And so the first sort of business is to line up the CM at risk contractor with our investigations and start to line up that removal process ultimately with the phasing and the methodology of which that's done. And so that's, that's what this update is, is showing where that first theoretical slope would fall in terms of how that lines up with, with a potential widening through the narrow section of the roadway. section of the roadway. I've been told you're no longer allowed to ask questions because we have to hurry it up. So if there's a question, I'm just kidding. I'm not the boss here. And then so from the investigation on trenching, what we found was there will be no blasting required to excavate the trenches to build both the effluent and the wastewater line. The effluent line must fall at least seven feet from the existing wastewater line, which is shown in that cross-section there. The majority of it can be done with a standard excavator, north and south of the narrow section. And then we will need a rock trencher, a rock saw through the narrow section as we will hit some more dense material, but we will not need to blast. And then the Geotech has recommended a hydraulic rock drum cutter for the wastewater line, which is going to go in the existing trench of the existing 24-inch effluent line. And that's shown graphically there, where you can visualize that effluent line goes in first, just next to that gravity line to the west. And then once that's done, you can take the existing effluent line offline, remove it, and then place the gravity line in that existing trench. That is right now the proposed alignment. And that has been confirmed really with the geotechnical investigation, where that section kind of along the center of the roadway, just along the southbound lane, is kind of where we find the softest dig in terms of the existing material through that roadway. And that's what we're recommending for those alignments. As noted earlier, the 15% concept plans have been updated since the alternatives. So we actually have plan and profile for each one of the alternatives. We have the roundabouts have been refined, which is shown there in that graphic, where previously that roundabout was shown a little further south. We have moved it to just north of Twisted Trail, where we kind of have an opening in the rock at that location. That's just one example of how we're refining in terms of the horizontal location as well as that geometry. We have effluent and wastewater plan and profile based on the alignments I discussed, cross-sections, earthwork, as well as cost estimating. So we went through and did a pretty thorough evaluation of these concepts. And again, we overlaid the geotechnical investigation in terms of the joint sets and where that falls within the widening. And that's shown there in red and in cyan. So after evaluation, we are recommending alternative 3B for several reasons. Number one, it was the highest ranked, as you recall, during the evaluation process. It has the capacity for future traffic demand. It allows for two lanes of traffic in SR 89 while the effluent wastewater line are constructed. And I'll quickly run through the proposed phasing right now. As we noted earlier, provides an emergency evacuation corridor. It is feasible to remove the rocks along the known shear zones for the full widening. And it ultimately is similar in cost to 5B, which really 3B and 5B were the, the, the primary alternatives that, that, well, ultimately, all three were considered. But shown through the traffic analysis, the 3B and 5B ultimately rose to the top, with 3B being the recommended alternative. Overall construction costs, that is in our estimate, and I broke it down into just the basic categories. So alternative 3B, the total cost is estimated at 36.7 million. That is, again, for the full five lanes throughout the corridor, and that includes the effluent and the gravity main. So general costs are 9.3 million. That includes, that includes traffic control, that includes mobilization. Those are the general costs that come with the contractor. The removals are 3.9 million, of which we're removing almost 21,000 cubic yards of rock at $120 per cubic yard. Our engineer actually estimated closer to $75 to $100, but we increased that by $20 just to be conservative. And that was based on production rates and densities of that rock that he anticipated. The roadway is at 14.8 and utilities 8.8 million, which is, again, the effluent wastewater, manholes, and other associated features.
Counselor Van Gambogim?
Andrew, you used the term blasting a couple of times. And before the no blasting buttons come out, I wanted to assure you, there's not going to be rocks flying through the air hitting the courthouse. All, all, all that happens is you cleave it and the rock drops right where it is.
Yep. You're basically just relieving that pressure so the rock cleaves right off those zones that we've already established through the investigation.
Counselor Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Do I recall that the, the number related to rock removal was nearly double in earlier estimates and like closer to 50,000 cubic yards? But is it because of the geotechnical investigation that you've been able to minimize those amounts?
Yes, that's exactly right. It was, initial estimates, I think, were closer to 30 to 35,000 cubic yards of rock removal. Through the investigations and knowing it was going to be vertical, as well as some of the refinements in the roundabout placements and the shifting of the roadway, it's, it's reduced. And it will likely further reduce as we, as we start to, to go through more iterations. Just for comparison's sake, I do have alts 2B and 5B. Alt 2B is 25.2 million, where you see significantly, it's half in roadway costs and about half in removals. Utilities have increased because just strictly the rate of production and trenching is going to be much slower. And then the traffic control has gone up because we will have to detour to Willow Creek Road or others, because there's going to be no way to construct through the narrow section without closing the roadway. And then 5B, as noted, is very close at 35.5 million. And then phasing, really quick, the, this is the initial phasing. Again, we'll go over this with the C Mar. Overall, we're estimating approximately 16 months of construction. Several of these are based on, again, production rates we got from the Geotech, 1,000 cubic yards a week of rock removal, based on their investigation, and then approximately 200 feet per day of trenching for both of the utilities. And so ultimately, to keep two-way traffic through the corridor, we're proposing that the first item of construction is removing the east side rock to actually build the east side of the roadway widening. So what we would do is shift traffic to the rec, to the west, excavate on the east, then ultimately construct the east side roadway, shift traffic to the east to build the effluent line. As you know, the effluent line is basically going to fall on the existing southbound road so we can shift traffic away. And then we'll construct the effluent main, then we'll construct the wastewater main by moving traffic back to the west, because then we'll clear the zone on that side. Then we'll do rock removal on the west side to then shift traffic to the west side and then ultimately run our final pave, striping, and closeout. So we have it right now proposed as, as seven phases. And again, ultimately, we'd run through this with, with the C Mar, should this be the, the chosen alternative. And we're estimating around 16 months of, of construction duration. And then Gwen's supposed to close it? Okay.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I think you have to ask it there.
Would you, would you like to take public comment, Mayor? Would you like me to do next steps?
I would like to be able to take a little public comment.
Yeah.
So we're 2:34. Let's take, how many, how many comment cards do you have, Jay Clark?
I have six, Mayor.
All right, let's see if we can get through those. And why don't you call up the additional people so they can kind of line up and save a few minutes?
Ann Marie Ward. De Carter Labarche.
Good afternoon. All models are wrong. Some are useful. A brilliant engineering professor told me that. Models are used for the weather, think Texas, retirement accounts, and even predicting resuscitous spousal abuse. They are all wrong, but they can be useful. The scoring models in the process for this project are wrong. I facilitated dozens of pairwise analysis to rank complex medical device projects. After the ranking, I'd always asked the same question. Do the results match what your critical thinking tells you based on your education and experience? Have you asked that question? I think not. Every time, after in-depth discussion, we would change the rankings, overruling the model. A model provides only inputs and considerations. No more. Models do not eliminate the need for critical thinking. The model that you use for the pairwise comparisons, which, by the way, is a series of opinions, not based on facts and data, needs to be looked at. We talked briefly in the, in this very meeting about cost and how cost was ranked last by a lot. Even trail, bike, and park accessibility was deemed to be twice as important as cost. Does that match up with, with your critical thinking? Second, I also want to make sure that, that question 10 of the public survey does not get lost. I would like the city of Prescott to make every effort to retain the natural aesthetic of the Granite Dells during this project. 85.65% strongly agreed with that question. Make sure that doesn't get lost. I think you can, you can improve your pairwise ranking model, which feeds directly into the final alternatives, to make it right. You have the power to do that using your critical thinking. I encourage you to do that.
Mayor Good, members of the council. My name is Ann Marie Ward, and my family lives directly on State Route 89 and will be affected by this project. The initial 2023 proposal reflected roundabouts that would require eminent domain to many properties, including my family home. This would have cost the city millions of dollars in acquisition and legal battles. However, the council was not informed of that reality at the time. The proposal confused us. Why not put in a turning lane for a fraction of the cost and no need for eminent domain? After consultation with a series of attorneys, our family met with former city manager Katie Gregory, former mayor Protem Brandon Montoya, Gwen Roich, and Tyler Goodman to ask for clarity on July 18th of 2023. During this meeting, Ms. Gregory was stunned that the proposal reflected a need for eminent domain and turned to Ms. Roich for clarity. Ms. Roich also claimed ignorance, stating that she and her team did not know how to read their own map. And that, her proposal was simply a, quote, "ask for heaven" when they would accept purgatory, knowing that public outrage was coming. It is difficult to believe that your entire city department was incapable of reading this property line map, which included ownership names. Ms. Gregory assured us the project could be executed without eminent domain and referenced the eminent domain airport debacle as grounds for avoiding such a situation whenever possible. Ms. Gregory directed Ms. Roich to update the proposal to reflect no eminent domain, and on July 21st of 2023, we received a confirmation email from Ms. Roich, it was complete. However, the roundabout proposal has reappeared, and one is described to be, quote, "near Twisted Trail," which is in the direct vicinity of the eminent domain roundabout I just outlined. I would ask that the city council please direct the appropriate individuals to provide clarity to the public and all affect, affected homeowners, and where applicable, their attorneys, on exactly where the roundabouts will be and if eminent domain is going to be back on the table. Finally, during a previous city council session, a citizen who served on the Kimley Horn Advisory Group equated it to a, quote, "lipstick on a pig sham"
Yeah, 20 seconds.
...that claimed public input, but managed to neatly create a statistical scenario in which the city staff's preferred widening options would always win. The dishonesty and incompetence of this project from start to this point should be alarming. I encourage you to reflect the citizens' remarks of that 85% that do not want this done. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Labarche, and then we'll have Joanne Olers, Rod Moyer, and David Chasson, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Let's talk safety. Regarding the effluent line and the, and the, the piping that needs to go in, that's a, that's a given. However, the backup for that was, the initial call was safety. And the initial results that were, that were put together in this first studies said that the widening of this would increase the safety of the traffic going through the narrows. However, the numbers that they showed considered two years of numbers, all lined as one. And they also had a number of accidents, or crashes, as you would call them, that were single car. But they didn't identify how many single car accidents and how many of them that were crashes that were off the road in a single car, which is probably, and most decidedly, driver in, driver impacted. Had nothing to do with density of traffic or following too close. It's drivers distracted, not following what they're doing. You add another lane, you're going to add more speed, and then you're going to add more crashes. Now, after you do all of this, the initial, the initial criteria was calming of the traffic going through the narrows. So now we're going to increase it with two lanes, and then we're going to add traffic circles to reduce the speed and slow them down. Leave the narrows alone, put the piping in, and let's move on.
Joanne Olers?
We're going to have decorum in this meeting. So if you approve or oppose, keep your applause and any cat calls or anything else to yourself. Otherwise, you'll be asked to, to leave.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good, Council. I'm Joanne Olers of 2911 East Granite Gardens Drive in Prescott, Arizona, and I'm speaking on behalf of Save the Dells and as a neighbor of State Route 89. The Granite Dells is special, and we want to keep it that way. We oppose any widening, especially through the Dells and Narrows area. We believe that informed public is essential so city and staff don't miss important elements of a project. And to address public concerns about the roadway, we think smaller scale, less intrusive, pragmatic changes are the answer. I do have a few questions. I will be sending in additional comments also. I do have to just take a pause and make a point. There was a reference to a level three level of traffic in the Dells roadway all day. I have never experienced any congestion like that in the 15 years I've lived there. Maybe I'm confusing that with a projection, but there is no way that we're at a level three all day, and there is no way that we are waiting for 15, 20 minutes to get out of our neighborhood. It just, it never happens. And maybe if the pipe was broken, that was the time, but not since then. Okay, a few questions that I have. Your presentation from Mr. Mayor focused on safety, but I'm wondering, where is the viewshed in natural aesthetics discussion? I didn't hear anything about preserving the beauty, which is an element that we've heard from a lot of people here. We saw a lot of numbers and traffic studies and geotechnical information, but the viewshed is really important. I don't feel sold on that at all. Also, when I'm looking at the roll maps, I see that there are rightouts from Granite Dells Road and other places. And so if I'm coming out of my road to get onto 89, I need to make a right out, and then I would need to take a, make a, into a left merge lane within 1,500 feet to get to a roundabout so that I could go left. Is that safe for me to do? It doesn't sound like it's very safe. That roundabout, which is now a little bit north of Twisted Trail, looks like it's on private land. I happen to know that piece of land is for sale right now, so I'm not sure where the other exits to that roundabout would go.
We have 30 seconds.
My next question is, how is the public to comment on the study session? And how does the public hearing work for submitting comments? What are we actually commenting on? We don't see many more details in the plan than I'd like to see. Thank you.
Mr. Moyer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like Ms. Olers, who just spoke, who has experienced nothing like the poor level of service that is described here. And she lives right there, along the two-lane section of road, north of the, about a mile north of the, I mean, her exit- her exit, sorry, is right there along the two-lane road, about a mile north of the Watson Willow Roundabout. I have a close friend who lives on the other side of 89 at about the same place. He spent an entire day, one day, more than eight hours, driving back and forth between the Fippen and the Watson Lake Roundabout. He, his time was three and a half minutes at best and five minutes at worst. And he also observed a situation which I have since observed. Southbound traffic from Chino towards Prescott in the morning rush hour comes to a screeching halt and backs up at the Watson Lake Roundabout. And I brought this up, I was on the advisory committee, and he was on the advisory committee. And we brought this up in, in our committee meetings. And no one commented one way or the other on what we'd observed. What we were instead told is that that roundabout is outside the scope of this project. So I leave you with the thought, what if you spend tens of millions of dollars and haven't fixed the worst part of the problem for traffic handling? Thank you.
David Chassen?
Thank you. David Chassen, local resident, retired, Washington State Department Transportation. I just have a couple of comments on some of the data collection. My dad was a civil engineer. I went into transportation. I hated math, so. But my dad would say that everything is built on the data, and everything we've seen today is built on the data. So I do have a couple of questions, the one being that the traffic volumes, according to the study, 3.1.3, they were done in a 24-hour period. So they were only collected on one day without any consideration to the days, variations in the days of the week, the time of year, weather conditions. And I have a concern with that. There should have been multiple days. I don't understand how the data was collected. I assume you were using tubes on the road, but I wonder why the data wasn't collected for a week over a couple different periods. That would have made more sense than one day. I did look up January 7th, the day you collected. We were anticipating snow that week. That could have changed the amount of midday traffic, people that were traveling to the store. In fact, it snowed on January 7th. It was the first day we had snow. So the day you were collecting the traffic volumes, we had some snow, not very much, which is typical. But I just think that's not very good data there, just after 24 hours worth. Second, on 3.2 level of service, these determinations were made using 10 simulation runs with PTV visum. And my question would be, on a project of this size, is it typical to only do 10 simulations? I mean, we're looking at a $37 million project here. I would think, as is done in other simulations, 10 simulations would have been the minimum. You would have taken those 10 simulations and decided on your level of confidence. And that would have helped you decide how many more runs needed to be done. So I, both of those I find a major concern. Collision data, four years, 117 collisions, that's a little less than 30 per year, or roughly 2.2 a month. 75%, which were non-injury. 33% were single vehicle. Right off the bat, I'd question, oh, how many of those were DWIs or might have been police-related? Because those should have been taken.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. So I'd just like to say in closing, I drive Willow Lake, Willow Creek all the time. That road is horrible. There could be so much done to reduce the platooning from the school, the aeronautical school, even down to fries. You got four signals there that could be tied together with computers, which would totally change some of the data you're showing today. So last thing I want to say is, I wish you'd improve signaling. Someone just got killed out in front of my street on Willow Creek, and I've called several times about that signal. He was killed on a motorcycle last week.
Your time's expired.
I'd like to see the money put into repairing roads before we start building new ones.
Bonnie McMinn? This is the last one. And to everybody that's coming in right now, sorry, Bonnie. If you could please kind of keep the volume down for us, we're wrapping up our study session. So a lot of the seating will open up, and then everybody can come in for the voting meeting, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bonnie McMinn, I just have one comment. I also served on the advisory committee, and I do believe that the meetings were run well. However, there is this emphasis on cost. The advisory committee was never given any information about cost. So with this ranking that we did, it was based on what we heard. There was never a dollar amount mentioned. So I, I would caution all of us, when we look at, oh, cost was rated last, we never had data in order for us to rank that. And I don't know that this group was, that council is aware of that. But I think that's important for the community to know that cost was never a factor for us. So we, how could we evaluate it? I personally evaluated it very high because I remember what the numbers came in before, you know, based on the newspaper in 2021. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for your time.
That's all, Mayor.
I appreciate everybody's attendance and concern about this. This is a major, major project, but I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss it and encourage additional public comment. Some of the comments made just now, I think, are significant, and we'll consider those as we move into the additional phases and public comment period. So this study session is adjourned. This, this study session is adjourned.